Good evening. We want to welcome you to the Ogden City Council meeting for June 5, 2012. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Stevens. He has asked to be excused tonight. And we are privileged to have a few scouts with us tonight. We have Troops 490, 534, and 145. Look at where's, is it 645? 645. And Caleb O'Neil will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And he's got a few scouts that'll come up and help him with this. So Caleb, we'd like you to bring those boys with you. And we'll just come right up here to the front. It'll be our honor to have you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Just come right up here to the mic.
Will you please follow the Pledge of Allegiance with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guys, stay there for just a moment. Want to thank you very much for doing that. And then we'd like you to introduce yourselves. Tell us what merit badge you're working on and what troop you're from.
I'm Caleb O'Neil, and I'm from Troop 490. And we're working on the citizenship in the community merit badge.
I'm Spencer Wilson, and I'm from Troop 490. Well, kind of. And we're working on the citizen to the community merit badge.
I am Jason Lawson. I am scout troop 492. And I'm working on the citizenship to the community.
Thank you, boys. And the other troops, we've got Mr. Sheffield. We'll have you come up. And we'll have the boys from 534 come up also.
I'm Andrew Sheffield, and I'm working on the communications merit badge.
Thank you.
I'm Joe Richards, and I'm working on the communication merit badge.
I'm Zach Hall, and I'm working on the communications merit badge.
Thank you, boys. Again, thank you all for being here tonight. It's nice to have some scouts with us. Next on the agenda is a moment of silence. Thank you. Next is a request to be on the agenda. The Gole Foundation would like to come and give us a report on a wonderful city event we just had. Jenny will be up here presenting for us.
Hi. I'm Jenny Skothern, the Executive Director of the Gole Foundation. And I also have with me my Board President, Kevin Burns, tonight. I just want to first begin to thank you for giving me an opportunity to present to you, to tell you a little bit about the history of our foundation and what we do. I will address the marathon, but I also want to just give you a little bit of a preview of our mission and all the events that we support in the community, if that's okay. And Kevin, will you do my? Kevin's really good to bring with me, so. I don't know if everybody's aware, but we were actually founded after the 2002 Winter Olympics to keep the volunteer spirit alive. So our organization was founded, we had a lot of people with a lot of great vision that wanted to keep that Olympic spirit alive. Go ahead. Okay. So in addition to the venues in Weber County, the game's brought to light a dynamic group of athletic-minded volunteers, spectators, and participants. And with a determination to keep the spirit alive, the Gole Foundation was formed. It began as the Weber Cultural Legacy Foundation. Today, our vision is for a greater Ogden community that is stronger economically and healthier in mind, body, and spirit. And I won't read our whole mission, but today, even though our mission has evolved, it stands that we support the greater Ogden community's vision to be recognized as an outdoor recreation mecca. So we do this by supporting and producing unparalleled athletic events. And in everything we do, we like to collaborate with government agencies, the community, and local businesses to bring a sense of pride and belonging to all those involved. My papers are sticking. The Gole Foundation has a very popular tagline, "Get Out and Live." We've become identified with that, and it resonates with a lot of people. So whether you want to participate, spectate, volunteer, or donate, we encourage the community to get out, get active, and get involved. The Gole Foundation is a staff of four, and we have a very active Board of Directors comprised of small business owners, community leaders, and community members. The Gole Foundation produces the Ogden Marathon, and we're in our third year of our second event that we produce Hurt in the Dirt. It's an off-road duathlon out at Fort Bonaventura. And in addition to our produced events, we also support the Do Tour, Archery World Cup, Tour of Utah. In 2011, we did one stage. This year, it will be three stages. Also, in 2012, we supported the USA Collegiate Cycling Championships, Exterra National Championships, and new last year was the Exterra National Championship Trail Run. By the numbers, for room night only, the conservative economic impact of the Gole events that are produced and supported is approximately $4 million. Exterra, in contrast to that, in their reports of the economic impact for the greater Ogden area, is $2 million in direct economic impact and $3.5 million in media impact. In 2011, the Gole Foundation supported over 10,000 athletes. We had 1,700 volunteers for all of the events with approximately 13,000 hours, 72,000 spectators, and 500 young runners in our Young Runners program. The above volunteer efforts equated to $233,800 from the Utah Commission of Volunteer Services. And then there's the Ogden Marathon, the 2012 Zions Bank Ogden Marathon that we just wrapped up. And it was an amazing event. This event brings the whole community out, so we're very excited about it. The 2012 Ogden Marathon saw 9,095 runners. We represented 39 states and five countries. You hear a lot of things, but our event has about 11% out-of-state participants, and the rest are within the Utah, within Utah area. The preliminary numbers of economic impact for room nights only for the 2012 Ogden Marathon is just under $1 million, with 418 room nights. The Gole Foundation, though, saw approximately 8,900 athletes. We only had 1% of our athletes this year not pick up their packets, which is an extraordinary show rate. So with the 8,900 athletes and their family members, we saw about 22,000 athletes, family, friends down at the Union Station on Friday for packet pickup. So we think that that's an amazing number to bring into downtown, hopefully they're shopping, eating, and enjoying our community at the Fun and Fitness Expo. The Gole Foundation also collaborates with the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA programs in the Ogden area for our Young Runners program. This year, we actually ramped it up a little bit, and we partnered with Intermountain Healthcare Live program. You've probably seen the billboards around. And it took corporate volunteers, some of our corporate sponsors, Zions Bank, IHC, Granite Construction, broad employees to help us to go into these schools for an eight-week program. So we used the Live manuals, they donated those, and we spent eight weeks right before the marathon, which is a little crazy in retrospect, giving these guys health and nutrition. And their goal is to win an entry into either the Kids K or the 5K. So we saw about 242 kids from those programs win their entry into the race. And if you haven't watched, over 900 kids cross the same finish line as your Ogden Marathon, full marathon, and half marathoners, all I can say, it is a total trip, and it is worth, it's worth for you to come down to the finish line and see that happen. It's an experience you will not soon forget. In the past two years, we have watched several families graduate from the Kids K to the 5K, and it is a delight. Gole success has come through outstanding participant growth and increased community involvement within these events. The Ogden Marathon has received national exposure in Runner's World Magazine for two years and top-10 lists. We had a write-up from Jeff Galloway, who was one of our speakers in 2010 in Southwest Spirit Magazine. And we're trying to even more brand the "Get Out and Live" message. We've co-branded with our community sponsors and partners like Young Subaru and Solomon. Many times when we're supporting events like the USA Collegiate Cycling, the event organizers come up to us and say, "I wish we had a Gole Foundation in our community." We hear that over and over. And while Gole success has come through outstanding participant growth and growth of additional supported events, probably our greatest challenge is to continue to grow programs like the Young Runners program and to continue to help support the events that our community has with only one revenue-producing event, which is the Ogden Marathon. So that's something our board and staff faces as we do see growth. The support and collaboration from Ogden City and our other community partners has been invaluable to our dynamic foundation. We wouldn't have gotten our feet off the ground without that support. In addition, our sponsors are also key in collaborating with us in supporting our runners, our participants, our spectators. And they really do feel a true sense of community and pride and belonging when they support our events. They love being involved, so we like that. We are also dependent on the support and services from small businesses in our areas, Weber State University, and of course, our volunteers. At the end of a long day, and the courses are set up and then torn down again, it's always great to have our volunteers, our sponsors, our athletes come up to us and thank us, and giving them a chance to be involved in such dynamic and amazing events. At the Gole Foundation, we're very privileged to hear many stories from people that participate or volunteer in our events. And I just wanted to share an example of one email we got this year. We had a group coming, traveling from Ohio to run in the Ogden Marathon, and one of the gentlemen had liver and colon cancer, but he was going to race our race. So a little bit, really shortly before the marathon, here's the email I received. "I just wanted to thank you for helping us get into this race to honor our friend Jeff Skilling. Jeff was planning on running the Ogden Marathon, and unfortunately, he lost his battle with liver and colon cancer on April 20. He was at home when he passed. Jeff was a great inspiration to so many and loved life. At the end of his life, after his diagnosis in February, he took up the motto from the Ogden Marathon and your organization, 'Get Out and Live.' This was the way he lived his life, even to the very end. His smile was contagious, and we are all going to be running this Saturday for him and his memory, and in a tribute to a life well-lived. He has truly taught us all to get out and live." And I was at the expo when his team showed up. They were in their blue shirts that said Jeff. They said "Get Out and Live." And again, that's just one example of the many, many emails we get, even from community members, that feel like that message is impacting them and inspiring them. So I really think the Gole Foundation has been the little engine that could. I've been employed with Gole Foundation for about 14 months, and that's about what I can ascertain from it. Our events truly take a village. It takes a village from our sponsors, our volunteers, our Board of Directors, and the community. So I want to share a small clip with you, but also to thank you for your support and your time. And after the video, if you have any questions, Kevin and I will be happy to answer them.
Basically, what we came up with is that the Salt Lake Organizing Committee allowed us to contact the volunteers that volunteered at Snow Basin and the Ice Sheet one time. We had one point of contact with them. That we could say, "Hey, we're starting this group. We want to continue the volunteer spirit, and would you like to be part of our group?"
We did. We needed to rally around one event. And we picked the Exterra Triathlon, and I drove out there and pitched those guys. And they were like, "Ogden, Utah, we get 50 requests a year. We grant two races. Why would we give one to Ogden, Utah? Give us a chance to do it. We've got a great, amazing group of people that were volunteers and coordinators for the Olympics. We have the best in the business."
With a volunteer base now engaged, the Gole Foundation ambitiously accepted Ogden City's request to tackle the task of organizing what has become the marquee event for both the organization and the city, the Zions Bank Ogden Marathon.
When the Gole Foundation took over, which was a couple of years into it, they have raised it exponentially to what I call a world-class marathon.
The Ogden Marathon, for example, is widely viewed as one of the top events, running events, in the country. And so it's an honor for us to be associated with such great events and a great organization like the Gole Foundation.
With the marathon, Gole Foundation organizers and volunteers established an undisputed renown for unparalleled support and truly memorable events. That renown has drawn international events to Ogden, such as the Tour of Utah, the Archery World Cup events, and the Do Tour Championships. And the events are special not only for athletes, but for volunteers themselves.
They not only provide significant economic impact and benefit to the community, but also, I believe, provide a real lift in morale for the community.
They have taken a quiet community, and they've given us a purpose and a reason to collectively celebrate what's right about Ogden.
This is a story that should be told internationally, because it is a true success story of the Olympics coming to your town and you taking advantage of the spirit that they left. We all did this, and so many people did this.
We are definitely a really unique story to tell. And if you talk to any of the city managers or people that have been involved in city management or events and state government, they would all do anything they could to have a Gole Foundation in their community doing the good work that they've done.
Whether you participate, spectate, donate, or volunteer, the Gole Foundation is about far more than running or riding. It's about pride in an amazing community and its assets. It's about individuals forming a collective, and a collective improving the lives of individuals.
It's made an impact on my family. It's made an impact on my business. It's made me embrace this community, love living here, and it's just made a difference in the energy of the place that I live and raise my sons. And I'll keep showing up for Gole as long as I'm here.
Can I answer any questions?
I have a comment and a question. First of all, I mean, I think we're the ones that need to thank you guys. There's, I mean, there's not a group around that has so much energy and such a cool vibe, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. And you know, that group, they told that story before the start of the marathon about that group from Ohio.
They were amazing.
It was pretty cool. So, three questions.
Yes.
There's a lot of rumor out there that there might be a lottery next year for the marathon. Is that something you want to tackle, or are you still in discussion?
We're researching that, and we want to make sure we have our ducks in a row and that it's totally defined and laid out before we finalize.
Good luck with that one. I just want you to know, as far as the marathon goes, I have never heard anything but just, oh my goodness, I can't believe how amazing this whole thing is. One suggestion I've heard from quite a few people is, you know, you're already doing all this stuff. You've got, you know, the Kid K, 5K marathon. Why not throw a bike race in there?
I've heard that.
I guess Salt Lake does it. And, you know, you'd pick up a lot of people that maybe would love to run but can't, and already got a Canyon, and anyway, just passing that on.
Okay. Good to know. Yeah, I've heard that input before, actually, so.
Yeah, the only complaint I've heard is, people can't get in.
Yeah, that is a challenge that we have.
Good challenge.
You know, we feel like we're, we, saying "we" in my Board of Directors feels like we use a lot of busing. We have a pretty narrow canyon. We utilize some of the parkway. There's definitely things we could look into, like wave starts, and we dialogue this a lot. But it's a challenge, but how far do you grow it, you know, with the amount of space we have in the canyon? And Kevin, do you want to speak to that at all as a board member? Okay. And a sheriff.
The canyon, the canyon's tough. The canyon makes it tough. The canyon closure really makes it tough for us.
Kevin is also, you say your title, so I don't mess it up, but...
With the Sheriff's Office, I'm the precinct commander for the Ogden Valley, so participate with a lot of the events, end up working a lot of them, so.
And I'm lucky to have him as my goal president this year to help me navigate through all of these events, so that's great.
What a wonderful event this year. And weather was great, participation was great, so thank you very much.
We worked really hard to plan the good weather.
Yeah.
Don't talk about the weather. I tell people, "Don't talk about the weather."
It's really good weather.
You've had a long string of good ones. Do you have a date for next year?
It is always the third Saturday in May. Yes, so I believe it's the 18th, the 18th, so. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next on our agenda is two items of common consent. First is the Salary Schedule, Proposed Ordinance 2012-31. And the second is the Merit and Non-Merit Service, Proposed Ordinance 2012-32. And this is to set the public hearing for June 19, 2012.
I'll make a motion to set the public hearings for Proposed Ordinance 2012-31 and 2012-32.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Gockner and a second from Councilmember Van Huser to set the public hearing for June 19, 2012, for Proposed Ordinance 2012-31 and 2012-32. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Next is approval of minutes. And first is the minutes of the regular meeting held January 24, 2012, Councilmember Hyer.
Yes, I have reviewed those minutes, and they appear to be accurate.
And the minutes of the special meeting held March 13, 2012. The closed executive session held March 20, 2012, and April 17, 2012. Vice Chair Blair.
Yes, Chair Gockner, I reviewed those minutes and found them to be correct.
And the minutes of the joint study session and regular meeting of April 3, 2012, Councilmember Gockner.
Thank you. Yes, I have found those to be correct.
And the minutes of the town meeting of April 5, 2012, Councilmember Wicks.
Thank you. I reviewed those and found them to be correct. And with that, would make a motion that we approve the minutes from items A, B, C, and D.
Second, we have a motion from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Vice Chair Blair to approve these minutes under the agenda A, B, C, and D. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. These minutes are approved. Next is a public hearing for the tentative budget fiscal year 2013, consider of the proposed resolution 2012-12. And I believe Mr. Cook will be doing a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the council. Privileged to be able to share with you briefly the tentative budget for fiscal year 2013. Just a brief reminder I give you every year that this is an ongoing process with the budget, the capital improvement plan, the annual election plan, and there are other items as well. And it seems for many that it never ends. And I think that's true in terms of the process. This year, the budget schedule, the budget was presented on May 1 as required by state law by the administration. And we've held work sessions. This is the first public hearing. And you'll be setting the final public hearing for June 19. You've also just set the public hearing for the salary schedule, which is also required. You are required by state law to adopt the budget by June 22, which you'll accomplish this year by June 19. This year, the council spent a few work sessions talking about council goals. And actually, you'll be amending the council norms to incorporate your vision values, guiding principles, and priorities. But you're also incorporating and using as a filter this year 11 legislative projects for this coming year. And a copy of that has been provided both electronically and in the foyer for everyone to see what those particular projects will be for the coming year. It'll be a good focus for your policymaking. Terms of revenues for the general fund, you'll see just modest increases and decreases and an overall change of 1.2% in the general fund. So not a lot of change in revenue. Terms of additional fee increases, there are none proposed in this budget. However, the council, as you're aware, did approve water sewer and storm sewer rate increases on May 22 and effective July 1. Those are incorporated into the proposed budget, as well as the Consumer Price Index increase for all the utilities of 2.8%. Also, there's a substantial increase for the Weber Sewer District, and that's actually been absorbed in the budget. It's almost $1 million, and that was not passed on in the fee increase, because there was sufficient funding to absorb that this year. Personnel-wise, 14 positions eliminated, 13 positions added for a net minus 1, 576 full-time positions. In terms of the wage and benefit proposal, a number of increases included in the budget for retirement, for benefits. There is no pay-for-performance increase. There are some benchmarking changes, 14 positions, 15 positions reclassified. And then there is a proposed 1% bonus in July this year. The $266,000 I've included here is just for the general fund. There's an additional $104,000 in the other funds. All that totals about $1.5 million in wage and benefit increases that are proposed. From the capital improvement perspective, a little over $14 million proposed in the various funds. I do want to mention that these four, storm sewer, sewer, and water are prior to the rate increase change. There are some proposed changes this year for those, but total as proposed is $14.2 There are some changes recommended this year in the tentative budget. In the past, the tentative budget's not included changes, so I just want to briefly highlight those. There's also a handout that's been provided by the administration that describes in more detail. I'm just providing the highlights, if you will, and the totals for revenues and expenditures in the general fund. Approximately $200,000 of revenue increase. That's related to the utility administrative fee. And there was also a change or reduction in the cops and schools grant requirement this year. Expenditure-wise, $212,000, and that's all related to a move of arts culture and events from one department to another. The Water Utility Fund, a net increase in revenues and expenditures of almost $6.5 million. It's related to the rate adjustment that you've approved. There is a loan from the sewer fund to the water fund, which is reflected in both funds. And then there's also some bond revenue for the pipeline down the Ogden Canyon. On the expenditure side, there are some capital adjustments and administrative fee adjustments as well. In the Refuge Fund, there's a proposal for recycling education program, which would modify the expenditures by $40,000 with a net of zero. In the Sewer Fund, revenue changes of a net of $813,000, almost $814,000. Same for the expenditure side in terms of the net amounts. On the revenue side, the rate adjustments, the loan to the water fund, and capital improvements are what are included in all of those changes as well. On the expenditure side, it included the administrative fee adjustments, and then also the loan and the capital adjustments. Total in all funds, $7.4 million approximately in revenue and expenditures, what's proposed in the tentative budget. In terms of process, you do have a public hearing regarding this tonight. If you approve this, the tentative budget would be amended by this amount. And in all of the various detail that's been provided, that would then carry forward for your consideration for further amendment for the final budget on June 19. So I'd be happy to address any questions that you have.
Questions?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. And as part of a public hearing, we will now accept public input regarding the tentative Seems there's no public. Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Councilmember Van Huser to close the public hearing. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is to set the public hearing for proposed budget for June 19th, 2012.
And, Mr. Chair, also to be, to adopt or not adopt the resolution, which is the tentative budget.
Okay. And to adopt or not adopt Resolution 2012-12, and to set the public hearing for June 19th, 2012.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the proposed Resolution 2012, adopting the tentative budget for Ogden City for the fiscal year 2012-2013. Is there a second? And set a public hearing, sorry.
Okay. I'll second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Van Huser and a second from Vice Chair Blair to adopt Proposal Resolution 2012-12, adopting the tentative budget, and to set the public hearing for June 19th, 2012. This is a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Gockner? Aye. Councilmember Hayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Huser?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Gartner?
Thank you. Next is public comments. This is an opportunity to address the council regarding your concerns or ideas. Please limit your comments to three minutes. In this form of government, all city personnel are the responsibility of the administration, not of the council. Please discuss any concerns you may have regarding staff with the mayor, chief administrative officer, or department directors. Any public comment? Okay, comments from administration.
Nothing of his time, thank you.
Council staff.
I do not have anything tonight either, thanks.
Next is consideration of adjourning into a closed executive session pursuant to the
I have reviewed the purpose of the closed session, and it's consistent with state law.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a...
Adjourn into a closed executive session? I'll make a motion to adjourn into a closed executive session for the reasons outlined in the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Vice Chair Blair to adjourn into a closed executive session. This is a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Hayer?
Aye.
Councilmember Van Huser?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Gartner?
Aye, thank you. And as a reminder, following the closed executive session, we will return for new business and adjourn from there into other meetings. Thank you. Welcome back to the Ogden City Council Meeting. Let the roll call reflect that all council members are here, with the exception of Councilmember Stevens, who has asked to be excused. Next on the agenda is new business. First is the appointment of a Community and Economic Development Director. In consideration of this appointment...
Turn the time to Mayor Caldwell.
Appreciate that. We are very, very happy to present to you Tom Christopoulos as our choice for the Community and Economic Development Director. And just to give you just a little brief background, over the past 30 years, Tom has had a diverse mix of private and public sector experiences as both an entrepreneur and an economic development professional. Currently, he is the Deputy Director of the Community and Finance, Community and Economic Development Group here. As many know, our city of Ogden has been nationally acknowledged for its job creation and economic turnaround throughout the state and nationally. He also lectures on economic development through the International Economic Development Council, for which he is a certified member. Tom's got great background here. He's been with the Economic Development Department here for five years, and he's a great fit. We're very excited about what he's going to bring to the table. So, present to you Tom Christopoulos.
Thank you.
So, I would make a motion that we accept the appointment of Tom Christopoulos for the Community and Economic Development Director.
We have a motion from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Councilmember Hayer to approve this appointment of Mr. Tom Christopoulos. This is a roll-call vote.
Councilmember Van Huser?
Aye.
Councilmember Wicks?
Aye.
Councilmember Gockner?
Aye.
Councilmember Hayer?
Aye.
Vice Chair Blair?
Aye.
Chair Gartner?
Aye. And congratulations. And do you want to say anything?
The mayor indicated a lot that's happened, and I wanted to make sure that you are aware that without the council, none of that's happened would have happened. And so, I wanted to thank you for all of the work and some of the tough decisions that we have asked you to make, and it's not always been easy, and I know that sometimes it's really hard, because we're always going at light speed and asking you to digest a lot of information that we've had months and sometimes years to work on and digest it very quickly. But thank you very much for all of the support. We, excuse me, it's been a privilege the last five years to work here, and I hope that I'm here for as long as you can tolerate me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, when will his first official day be?
Okay. I'm young.
Second shift today.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is consideration to cancel city council meetings on July 3rd, July 17th, and July 24th.
I would make a motion to cancel the July 3rd, July 17th, and July 24th regularly-scheduled city council meetings.
I can second it.
We have a motion from Councilmember Wicks and a second from Councilmember Hayer to cancel the meetings July 3rd, 17th, and 24th. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And just a reminder, there will be meetings on July 10th and 31st. Next on the agenda is consideration to adjourn the city council meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Hayer and a second from Councilmember Gockner to adjourn the city council meeting. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is a reminder, we have a special redevelopment agency and municipal building authority meetings that will be held next, and we'll just give the recorder a minute to catch up, and we'll move on with those meetings.